Welcome, everyone. Hi, welcome to today's special meeting. This is Budget Study Session Number Three. Our special meeting is for our listening viewers, Tuesday, May 22nd, and we're starting at 4:00 PM. For the record, we do have a quorum. All members of council are present, and we'll call them in need of order. And at this time, we'll open it up for public comment for our budget study session. For anyone who would like to speak to this, please come forward. We don't have any -- yeah, just come on forward. I think we have comment slips for the regular city council meeting. Come on up. Welcome, Nancy.
Hi, my name's Nancy Bast. I'm a resident here in town.
Is it -- hold on. Is the mic turned up for public comment, please, HGP? I can't hear you very well, Nancy. Make sure that the clock is -- are you okay on the --
I hope so.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks, thanks very much.
Okay, Nancy Bast, Morro Bay. And I'd like to read a letter that I sent all of you in February. And it says, "The time has come to replace the backbreaking chairs used for public seating at the vets' hall and elsewhere, where they discourage public attendance longevity and participation in city business. I've spent hundreds, if not thousands, of hours in them over the decades, and I can empirically confirm that they were not purchased for their comfort or conformance to the human These features -- well, they're clearly, their design excellence lies in the concise, compact manner in which they stack together and take up a minimal amount of space in storage. It is likely these chairs figure into the inability of the public to remain in them for four or five hours awaiting discussion of the important and/or controversial issues placed last on the agendas. These features have been the primary consideration that they were purchased, this concise storage. Now, over 20-plus years in use, I'm sure their depreciated cost has long since been zeroed out. I've sat in countless chairs in public venues, and Morro Bay seating is by far the most painfully uncomfortable I've ever encountered. I implore you to seriously consider new ergonomic public seating. When I sent those to you all in February, I got a very nice response acknowledging it from Mr. Hitting, and also Councilman Davis was very sympathetic. And he thought that maybe he could do something about it when budget time came. I hope that you have. And if you did, you have my appreciation, and everybody else's too. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anybody else for public comment?
Hi, I'm Carol Trisdale. I've been here since 1995 and a homeowner. Couple of things I want to talk about. First of all, Jen, thank you. You're amazing. I'm a numbers gal, and, you know, you're cranking the numbers really well, so thank you. And thank you, Dana, for everything that you do. I really implore the council to look at the senior meals. Sometimes the senior meal is the only meal that a person gets. They have to choose because of their own finances between their medication, sometimes their animals, and themselves. So please, if you can squeeze a nickel, a dime, or a quarter out, give them the $10,000. Another thing I wanted to ask, playing with numbers. We are really facing a lot of serious issues in this city financially. And I don't know if anybody has done this, you probably have, Jen, is think about a 1% sales tax for a period of time that can address some of the deficits that are there and take the pressures off of the citizens, especially when we're faced with a possible $250 more a month water sewer bill. But think about, you're looking at TOT and taxes. Have the visitors come in and help pay, you know, a portion of that. And, Mr. Attorney, you may be marvelous, but you're expensive. And anyway, thank you very much for hearing my plea.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Mr. Davis, do you want to respond to the chair's comment? I think we had something for discussion on budget.
Yeah, I'll actually ask either Scott or Jen, because I'm pretty sure we saw that in the budget. That was part of the charter thing, I believe, wasn't it?
Yeah, so in the proposed budget, one of the capital projects that will be funded is a kind of complete overhaul in here, as complete as we can get, including audiovisual, and we included chairs in that as well. So we should have something coming forward fairly soon. I think we heard loud and clear that that was a priority for the council, so we'll raise that up to the top.
Great, thank you very much. And Nancy, thank you for bringing that to us.
Great, thanks. And with that, we'll move on to our special meeting and kicking off budget number, budget study session number three for the proposed budget follow-up and a 10-year forecast update and options to address unfunded liabilities. And Scott, are you going to introduce the slide?
Yes, I'll --
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and community members in the audience and those watching from home. City councils had two study sessions on the budget. May 8th was the general overview of the budget, which we presented at the high level and proud to present a balanced budget, and we are definitely benefiting from a strong, continually strong and robust economy. Though we did caution at the 8th and 9th meeting for this meeting, really, to talk about the future and where we're heading into the Cal-PERS storm and just being prepared for some difficult choices, and really focusing on the discussion tonight on kind of what that 10-year forecast looks like, and then really getting into the meat of Cal-PERS, and then hopefully getting direction in a few places, or thoughts about a process to engage the community, but also some direction with regards to how we may use funds to either pre-fund Cal-PERS or look at how we can kind of be proactive would be the best way to typify what we'd hope to hear from council in their direction. So looking at today, there are a few things I wanted to touch base with council on that we didn't discuss at the May 8th and 9th discussion, but that have bearing on the operations budget. The first, as the city attorney, there's been a request for an hourly rate increase. They've not been increased for several years, so asking for a modest $10 an hour increase for all billing codes, it's supported with the existing budget. This would be a separate agenda item that would come to city council in an open hearing to have that robust discussion, but that was something we wanted to make sure city council and the community was aware of, that that request has been made. And then the next slide, we wanted to go over the council bequest one more time. City council proposed a $16,500 budget for those bequests. The decisions were made, at least preliminary decisions, were to fund the Economic Vitality Corporation at the full requested amount of $10,000, the SCORE program at 500, an agreement to waive the facility fees for the group that provides meals on Mondays here. We provide funding of $5,000 to the home share program through the housing and lieu fund, and there's a remaining allocation of $5,000 the council would look at, you know, throughout the year to allocate. But there was a request that came in after the May 9th meeting from the senior nutrition program, typically fund that program at about a $5,000 level, and they've requested $10,000 to kind of reflect the need in the community. So we just wanted to make sure that was something to note for council. And then lastly, we did have somewhat of a discussion at the May 9th meeting around capital and what to do with our parks. We have a really good consolidated maintenance staff who assesses our needs and kind of responds to them on a daily basis, but we don't really have a guiding document, if you will, or a guiding plan for the various parks that we provide to the public, and really thinking it may be some need to have a cohesive plan to mark out if and when we have excess revenues or opportunities with the various funds to start applying those strategically. So we're seeking maybe some direction from council about their comfortability about doing and pursuing that and maybe appropriate funding levels. And then lastly, the citizen finance advisory committee met last week, and they were provided the capital budgets, that they reviewed the operation budget and measure key budget in their previous meeting. This was their opportunity to look at the capital, and there was consensus amongst the members to consider defunding the Surf Street stair reconstruction project, around a $300,000 amount to make those stairs ADA compliant. The committee felt that perhaps there's a better use for those funds to address other pressing ADA needs in the community, whether it's sidewalks, crosswalks, or those kind of things. So perhaps that was a better opportunity for council to consider. In order to make that a viable option, now since we would have to deconstruct the existing staircase, and there would be no staircase to remain, because it's too much of a potential issue from a safety position. So that was kind of the position of the committee, and so we wanted to make sure that was shared with the council. So if any of these items are worth a discussion, we just wanted to take a quick pause to circle back on all the May 8th and 9th issues.
Okay, great. Let me, I just want to cover the senior meals one. As we discussed at the last budget meeting, I believe, you know, I discussed that the senior nutrition had not submitted a letter and then contacted them following our meeting, which they followed up with their request. And to just clarify, their request of $10,000, Scott, I know you're laying out what their request was, their pastor requests have been 10. And the recollection of our last budget hearings, based on budget constraints, at that time, the discussion was to not fully fund the nutrition program, but the home share at that time had been introduced. So we basically discussed, okay, we could do $5,000 for home share and $5,000 for the senior nutrition program. Not to say that if council wanted to have a discussion and allocate the full share, that's a discussion that, of course, the council could have, but I just wanted to lay a little bit of that background out. And that's where we'd gone in the past, and probably where I would propose at this point, but we'll leave that open for the rest of council to discuss. And then you wanted us to come back and talk about both the Surf Streets chairs and the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program list. And maybe I'll just open that up for discussion at this point, and I'll shift to red and then go this way, and then later on, I'll shift for the other end and go back. So red, if you want to start off.
Yeah, this is --
Everybody in the middle.
This is discussion, not questions, right?
I think we just wanted to clarify what's proposed at this point from our city manager, and we can get into the questions and discussion, but he's laid out a couple items that we just need to have clarification on.
Yeah, and the park strategic plan, I understand that the purpose of that is just to take a surface look and try to identify the needs that we have, and then develop a plan that provides a timely progression of how we're going to address those needs. Is that right?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. And certainly, we want to do that at the least cost. So I wonder if we would be comfortable asking PWA and RPC to establish a joint subcommittee to look at our parks and do a basic SWOT analysis. I forgot already, SWOT is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And maybe make some recommendations and see that as a start. So those are my thoughts on that. And as far as the Surf Street stairs, that is an awful lot of money, $300,000 for an access that doesn't seem to serve a lot of people, and I would tend to agree with CFAC on their recommendation for that.
Thanks for that, Matt.
In terms of, I agree with Red in terms of passing on the beginning stages of the strategic park strategic plan to those two groups, I think that's a good way to start it off, at least, especially monetarily. So I agree with you, Red. In terms of the Surf Street stairs, I kind of go a different direction. On one hand, we don't have a lot of people using those stairs, but however, they're used and they use quite a bit. It's an entry point from the vets' hall down to the Embarcadero and vice versa, and I use them all the time. And I do believe, in terms of looking ahead, in terms of the ADA aspect of it, redoing the stairs, there's something that need to have been done for some time. So my initial reaction right now is to improve those. And in terms of building that park plan list going in the future, if we can do this to these stairs, knowing how they are used by our public, and then make them ADA compliant, I think that would be just another notch on the list of to-do list for our public access on parts of the city.
Thanks, Matt. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with Councilman Davis that we should not entertain hiring consultants, I think he meant that, maybe, and internally take a look at parks, so I would not allocate any funds to that and do quote-unquote "a minimal" look, as he suggested, so I concur. I do understand Councilman McWetzke's concerns with regard to the stairs. When I look at the needs that we're beginning to look at tonight at our regular meeting, totaling somewhere around $35 to $40 million to replace just the basic infrastructure of the city, not that I'm committed to spending all that money, and the needs that we have for streets and basic services, and when I look at the 10-year budget, for me, I would agree with, again, Councilman Davis, that I would be inclined to agree with CFAC and their recommendation to defund that because of the limited use, although I very much appreciate the historical perspective of it and would like to maintain as much of history as possible. Perhaps without ripping them out, the consideration might be to not allow them to be used, but to have signage that says, or whatever blockage that wouldn't allow the use of the stairs and hold it in abeyance for some time in the future to reconsider when we might be in a little bit better shape. Were we going to discuss the legal costs and/or did you want any discussion?
I think it was just the proposed items that we just laid out first, that we had Surf Street and Park Plan, and then senior meals was requested as well.
And then I would support the $5,000 remaining allocation to go to the senior nutrition fund. That's all we have left, so.
Okay, thanks. Marloes?
Sure, thank you. I'm going to start with that item. I just wanted to mention that there is one item left off of that list, and that was the Community Resource Connections Office, which we were also funding, and I think it was like $1,300.
$1,000.
How much?
$1,000. $1,000.
$1,000? Okay, I knew there was -- I know, because I am a liaison to them, and I know it was there. So thank you. And I would support the $5,000 as well. I agree with my colleagues on how to approach the park strategic plan. I think that's a really good start. I know that we have more parks than most communities, and I think just a good inventory of what we have and what might be needed from the community's perspective, which would flow naturally through PWA and through the Parks and Rec, would be a good starting point. I tend to agree with Matt on the Surf Street stairs, and maybe that's because I also use them a lot. But my recollection is that we were not approving in this coming year's budget the $300,000, but rather a design phase, which might in fact give us a more exact number on what it would cost to replace them. So am I correct in that?
That was the direction that was provided during the last budget study session. The discussion at CFAC stemmed around even $40,000 seemed like a lot to spend if the project wasn't going to get completed. So if we didn't think we'd complete the project in the future utilizing 300 or whatever that final amount ends up to be, why would we want to spend $40,000 when we could use that money for something else?
And I don't know if it actually cost $40,000, but I guess that was an estimate.
Correct.
Yeah. And I would say if we decide to not move ahead with this, that we should close those stairs. That would be my recommendation as well. So if that's the will of the council to drop that project, then we should close them.
Okay. So just for, so we got, all right, I'll make my comments on that. So I would support the senior meals at the $5,000, based on previous allocations and funding the home share. That was the $10,000, that's how we came up with that, so the $5,000 at support. And the park plan, I also support that, but as I understand, their impact fees are park and lieu fees that are available for those types of evaluations, is that correct? Are there park and lieu funds or impact fees that are available specifically for that? For something like that?
So we did talk about possibly being able to use those. I think Mr. Graham had mentioned maybe working with Cal Poly and seeing if that was a project that they could take on, and I'll let him speak to that more specifically.
Yeah, true. I was, they kind of do various projects, and some of their classes come over and do different things. I'm working with one of them right now. And so it might be something that we could have them work on, it'd be kind of an interesting, you know, project for them. And I'm meeting with the head of the CRP department. I think it's the end of this week, on Thursday, actually. So I was going to talk to her about it and see if there was some ability to have them at one of their graduate-level classes take it on, so.
Okay. And then what about not knowing exactly what a plan would, what the exact purpose would be for the park strategic plan? So is that more of a kind of an ADA assessment comparison? So we have an assessment done, and they kind of review it, and they do assess it, and they give us an assessment on that and make suggestions. So do people come in, like building inspectors, and say, hey, we're inspecting your parks and saying, hey, this park has a good bathroom, this one has stairs, et cetera, et cetera? Is that how it works? Or are there professional firms that come out and do this?
A couple of years ago, we contracted with a firm, Disabled Access Consultants, DAC, to perform that function citywide. So we have a list of access-related issues within the entire city, including sidewalks, parks, city facilities, this building. The strategic plan was more of to develop a menu, so to speak, of what types of facilities might be needed at each park, so that when we get requests, for example, for a bocce ball court or a fitness trail, we would have a match, so to speak, with what park that facility might be appropriate in, not to design and lay those out, but to give more of a strategic planning document, so that when those requests do come in, we can point that group or the city engineering or planning group in the right direction.
Okay. And so it seems as though the Cal Poly might be a good opportunity for that, as well as the suggestion by Councilmember Davis, kind of the SWOT effect with some of our advisory board members?
I think that would work perfectly. Yeah, I would just see what kind of capacity Cal Poly has, and in one form or another, we probably can get some work, you know, done, just depending on what level at Cal Poly that resides at. But there's definitely will be interest for some of the other classes, individual classes, if not, you know, the grad-level classes, so.
Okay, all right. I'd support the park plan as proposed and suggested by my colleagues, and with inclusion of an intern and a SWOT type of arrangement as proposed, senior meals and the Surf Street, my comments on that. Unfortunately, I would tend to agree with our CFAC board members, and considering the overall look at the city and the potential cost for that, it might be most prudent to have those funds available for other needs in a more higher-traffic areas. So that's what I'd be on the Surf Street at this time, so. Does that answer all the questions for those that are proposed?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we'll move on to kind of the 10-year forecast and the PERS options that we had planned to discuss tonight. We've gone through and updated the 10-year forecast. This is just the visual for the general fund. We use the staffing model as it was proposed in the 1819 budget. Again, assumed no COLA increases, because we know that the associations we have MOUs with have trigger points that would indicate if we were to provide the COLAs or not. However, we do have positions funded at Top Step, so there's some potential room in there to accommodate the COLAs should we reach those triggers to meet those. The intent of the forecast is to kind of highlight what the scenario would be if we funded things at a level that we thought was appropriate for the year. So when you go through and you look at 1819, we know we have a balanced budget, but when we get into 1920, and in the future years beyond that, that's when the implications from PERS start to take effect. We see those pension costs increasing, and we're projected to have shortfalls anywhere from, you know, $500,000-ish to $200,000-ish. You see variances throughout the year, depending on the assumptions built into the revenues, but also depending on the year of the PERS effects, because PERS rates are trapezoids, so they go up, they kind of level up, they go down. They're not stable each year, there's no linear increase each year. So that's why you kind of see some of those fluctuations year over year. And what this tells you, and I know you can't read it that well up here, hopefully you can read it better in your handouts, for members of the public, there's copies in the back table if it's easier for you to see, as well as that should everything happen the way that the forecast is predicting it, we would essentially use our emergency reserves through fiscal year 2028. We'd have deficit budgets through 2020, 2028, and have to rely on emergency reserves. So that tells us we need to take some action and start thinking about 2020 now and how we're going to accomplish a balanced budget in the future. Had a technical difficulty? No, it broke. Thanks, Scott. So in the staff report, while Scott is fixing that, thank you. We outlined what assumptions are built in, so that that was available for everybody to see. We have pretty minimal assumptions for revenue increases, property tax, sales tax, TOT, and business license. Property tax, and actually, all of the revenues kind of start to trend down when you get out to fiscal year 2026, and then they slowly start increasing a little bit. So there is not an assumed long-term recession built into these numbers, but there's some adjustments for economic upturns and downturns. The expenditure assumptions are outlined as well, again, on page five, and those are just kind of some flat expenditure increases with the exception of the pension ones. And we generated those numbers based on actuals given employees at Top Step and what we forecast our PERS rates to be going forward. We also outlined to you what we have included for the transfers. You could argue that some of these are pretty minimal funding, if not enough funding, for instance, $100,000 each year for facilities and capital projects. We know that's probably not enough funding, but We know that's probably not enough funding, but we know that, you know, our recent budgets have kind of balanced because we've chosen not to fund those at levels that perhaps they needed to be. It's not sustainable to continue doing that. So we have to start putting away some money for those, you know, infrastructure needs. The vehicle transfers amounts are based on a formula that was built in through management partners. They didn't make any adjustments to that. Slight increases for technology, and we've included back in fire equipment, well, the small amounts that are still included back in there had previously been removed. And then the other category is the risk management and compensable leave funds that we will propose to continue to fund, particularly compensable leave as we accrue that liability for employee leave. Wanted to show that to you graphically as well. These are just the revenue assumptions, how they kind of go up and then start to dip down and come back up. So you can see that there really isn't any sustained recession built into the forecast. Expenditures are assumed at fairly flat increases, again, except for the pension expenditure. That does start to flatten out in the out years is, you know, we can only forecast what PERS is going to do, so it becomes less and less reliable each year you move out into the future. And then these are, these are the transfers kind of stacked so you can see the totality. We're looking anywhere from 825, $50,000 to about $1 million in transfers that are programmed in and included in these forecast numbers. So as we talked about revenues or expenditures, that would indicate that we would have deficit budgets as we move forward into the next several years. The 1819 budget being the last one projected to be balanced, and that's a result of some of the mitigation measures that were taken, as well as the side fund payoffs that we talked about during the last budget study session. Oops. And again, graphically, it shows that we would just kind of dwindle down the emergency reserves to help offset those deficits if we don't take action now or come up with a plan of attack. So that's what we're here to do tonight, or at least start that conversation. We're going to start out with, you know, how did this happen and what are our options? The goal tonight is, the staff report has a lot of information in it. It's a lot of kind of technical information and can be a little overwhelming. I'm hoping that we can get through that information and kind of cross out some of the options we don't want to consider. It would be helpful from a staff direction if you could identify maybe two, three options that we want to pursue further, and we can do some more detailed analysis of that and come back. We're not on a timeframe per se to make any decisions tonight or, you know, even in the next council meeting, we can do more detailed analysis for you and you can make your decision at another point. We just want to have the conversation and start whittling down these options to a manageable number for us to deal with. So how did this happen? A little bit about the city plans, and again, this is on the staff report, so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. But we have nine pension plans. We have a classic tier two and a Pepper plan for each of our three classifications, miscellaneous, fire, and police. Each plan has a different benefit and has a different employer and employee contribution rate. The plans are funded through employer and employee contribution rates on our end. On the PERS end, they're funded through investment earnings. As I mentioned, each plan is different. The employer or the employee contribution rates range anywhere from an 11.5% to just over 6%. The lower contribution rates or the higher contribution rates from the employee side are for the Pepper employees, and again, that's they contribute more and they have less of a benefit when they retire. The employer contribution rates anywhere from 7% to 74%. So what that means is for every dollar in salary, we contribute 74 cents towards pension for that employee. And the, those are the classic plans are the ones that really have the implications in the long term. Those are the ones that we've accrued this unfunded liability for and that we'll be paying off of in the future. According to PERS, in 2015, the average pension is $30,500. It varies from employee to employee or retiree to retiree based on number of years, their salary, and what retirement formula they were in. However, 65 cents of every dollar paid out was a result of investment earnings on PERS behalf. 22% were the employer contributions, or 22 cents, and then 13 cents are the employee KELPERS, and we've talked a little bit about this, has a discount rate and it's been 7.5%. 7.75 to 7.5%. If you look at their actual earnings, you know, much as you would expect, the market is volatile, so it goes up and down. We have recently and in the last year achieved higher than the 7.5%, but that had not been the standard for the last several years. So that caused PERS to take some action. They implemented Pepper, which is the Public Employees Pension Reform Act in 2013. That became in effect. Again, that's for new employees that had never been in PERS before, hired as of January 2013. They have no other option but to be a Pepper employee. They have an increased contribution to their retirement fund and they have a reduced benefit, which means they work longer and they receive less of a percentage of their salary upon retirement. In 2014, 15, they, PERS reduced the discount rate from 7.75 to 7.5%. And then in 2018, 19, took action again to phase in this new reduction down to 7% over about three years. And lastly, they've adopted a risk mitigation strategy where they're effectively going to take advantages of the highs and lows in the market and adjust their discount rate according to those highs and lows. We talked a little bit about this in one of our previous discussions, but our total unfunded accrued liability is 23, almost $24 million. Our funded ratio ranges between 68 and 70%. The average, a couple of years ago when I was able to find data, was about 72%. So the other thing I would point out about this is unfunded accrued liabilities, when we get our next actuarial report, it will be different. They, you know, are all subject to the market. So whatever I tell you today could be different when we come back in August and have a new actuarial report. So expect that. What has more obeyed done in terms of our pension plans and trying to stabilize our impact? We prepaid the fire side fund. We've paid off the police side fund, resulting in some interest savings. We plan to prepay our UAL payment in one lump sum rather than throughout the course of the year. So we'll do that for the first time with 1819. It'll achieve about a $50,000 savings in interest. That'll of course be offset by a little bit of interest lost because we'll have a cash flow. We'll take out a larger, you know, cash withdrawal in July to make that payment, but we don't budget for interest, so effectively it'll be a $50,000 savings to the city throughout all the funds. And then you've established a general fund emergency reserve policy, recognizing that you will need to utilize that when either there's an economic downturn or these PERS implications have, take place. So when we are going to move into the next section here on what are our options for the UAL, the unfunded accrued liability, we wanted to have some kind of guiding principles that helped us in making recommendations to the council and kind of clarified, you know, what path we were on. The recommended guiding principles that we outlined in the staff report are volatility. We really want to manage the volatility of our returns, diversification of risk, and local control of assets. Those are kind of the three, the three principles we identified as being the most important in steering any of the recommendations that we make going forward. So as I mentioned, we took the approach with the staff report of providing you, the council and the community with kind of a comprehensive list of what we could identify as all the possible options. That does not mean that they are all viable or should be implemented. They are also all not mutually exclusive, so you can do a combination of several of these, and that would be appropriate. Rather than going through the detail as we've provided it in the staff report, we kind of put together this chart as a summary and thought we'd talk about them individually. So the first option that we outlined was status quo, which really is do nothing, maintain the course, kind of get by each year, if you will. So you achieve no savings from that. You're not really being proactive. And we identified that as well. You have minimum payments and you do have that local control. The con is you have minimum payments, so you're not starting to, you know, whittle down that UAL. The next, oops, the next option we identified being a fresh start. This option is intriguing because you do achieve significant interest savings over the course of whatever period you choose to fresh start, 20 or 15 years. However, you, it's irrevocable, so once you lock into that option, you can't go to PERS in two years and say, we don't have the money to make, you know, the funds available to do that extra payment. They won't let you change your mind. You can't go back to a 30-year period, just like if you did a new mortgage, you can't go back and say, oh, I want to go back to my 30-year mortgage. I can't do the 15 anymore. So that's not an option with the fresh start. And that's really what's kind of the most concerning for me and, you know, as your finance director, I wouldn't recommend the fresh start because of that. The additional payments is similar to that, and that was the third option that we outlined. It's a choice of the council and a direction of the council each year to say, we've identified this amount of money to apply towards one of our plans. And that will achieve the same interest savings if we make those payments every year. However, it gives you that control to recognize in any given year that you don't have the funds available, whether it's because we've gone into a recession, there's another competing need, whatever the case may be. You're not committed to doing that, but you can effectively do that and make that choice every year. So that is an option that's viable for the city. Setting up a general fund reserve seems a little bit repetitive to the general fund emergency reserve that you already have, except for it would require a, or I would envision it requiring a separate policy that would be very specific to it being dedicated to pension and being able to draw down for that, whether it be for the additional payments or any other options you choose to provide direction to us on tonight. We'd have to think about what the funding source to that would be. Would it be year-end excess revenues or expenditures if we have them? Would we want to seed fund that with some of the emergency reserve money and take it and a piece of that and set it into this pension-specific reserve? And all of that we'd need to flush through in terms of what that policy would look like and bring forward a draft for you to kind of start the conversation with if you wanted to keep that option on the table. We also mentioned the pension trust, the IRS 115 trust. This is something that's been popular with a lot of cities, and you hear a lot of cities going this route. The advantages are that you now have local control of your investments. So it works the same as the PERS pension trust. We're out in the market. The market goes up, our investments are going to go up. The market goes down, there's a market correction, we're going to lose money, just like PERS. However, we get to choose our investments, so we could be less risky, we could be more conservative in what investments we take. One of the disadvantages is once we put that money in the trust, it is only ever used for trust purposes. There's no changing our mind. If you have a policy for a reserve that's under our control, you can change your mind and change that policy. You can't do that with a pension trust. So that's a pro and a con, really. The con being you can't ever change your mind, as I mentioned, but on the flip side of that, a future council couldn't change your mind, their mind either. You've locked all future councils into that pension trust and having that money set aside for pensions only. So that's kind of the, we can discuss more, have more discussion about that if you'd like, but I'm concerned about where we'd fund a pension trust initially. It would likely have to come from the emergency reserves. And again, if we have an economic downturn, we would never be able to draw from that trust to help offset any future downturns for however long of a period that may last. And that's just unknown. And then we talked about employee cost sharing. That's happening in a lot of cities as well. It makes sense. It's probably a reality. It gives us some local control. It's a reduction of our annual ongoing expenditures, but it does need to be negotiated through the bargaining process, so it's not something that we can unilaterally implement at this point. We mentioned line of credit and GO bonds. Both of those, we highlighted in the staff report that we don't recommend those. A line of credit essentially would be borrowing against should we need it. You're going to have an annual financing charged to that whether you use it or not. It might defer some interest debt, but doesn't, doesn't seem like a real viable option for the city that we'd recommend. And the same with GO bonds. They're subject to market volatility as well. They would affect our debt capacity, and they're not recommended through GFOA as a best practice. And I think we have other options that would better suit our position today than either the line of credit or the GO bonds. So we mentioned those two in the staff report. I've also gone ahead and kind of redlined the fresh start. Again, I wouldn't recommend that going forward, but kind of going to stop here and there was a lot of information in the staff report, and I'm sure you have some questions, more detailed questions, and we can talk about each one of these or anything specific.
All right, Jen. Great. That is a lot of information, and thanks for putting all the graphs and charts together. It's a lot to get through and it is helpful, as much information as may be. So maybe we'll start back with Red, and you can start us off on addressing where we're at at this and any discussion items on the, any questions you might have, and then these unfunded options that you want to discuss if there's, if you have some of your own opinions or recommendations and direction where you'd want to go, and we can follow from there.
The one that seems most palatable to me is the general fund reserve. But under pros and cons, the pro is that it is irrevocable, and then a con is that it is revocable. I don't understand that. And the table.
I think that was an error on my part.
Okay. Then the, because, I believe it is revocable. Is that correct?
It is.
Okay. And so that means that from an accounting standpoint, it does not offset the unfunded liability because it is revocable. It is not dedicated to paying off the liability. Is that correct?
That's correct. I would point out, though, that I don't believe that GASB has ruled that the pension trust does either at this point, although there's a lot of discussion about it, possibly in the future.
Yeah.
So there isn't actually any of these options that would offset on our financials the liability.
Yeah. And I guess to me, though, that's just a definition on a piece of paper. It doesn't really reflect what we are actually doing to pay off the liability. It just, it shows on a balance sheet that we're in a deficit. Is that correct?
Right. It sort of affects the net position, and unless and until there's some ruling through GASB that some of these could be applied towards that and offset it, you wouldn't see any value in the CAFR on it, but, you know, these discussions would highlight that, and I think that would be part of the conversation, that.
Okay. So I guess the reason I like this is because there's local control and there seems to be some flexibility from year to year in how we apply the payments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if I talk any longer, my eyes are going to cross, so I'm...
Okay. Thanks, Jen, for all the information. Looking at all these various options, is it, if we go with one, do we have to stay with one? Is it possible to have a combination, when I see, in terms of the additional payments? If you did something like additional payments, even if you went to the GF Reserve or pension trust, would that be more of setting up a policy for each year that if there was excessive monies to then make the additional payments, so you could choose one and then have another policy to make additional payments if applicable?
So they're not all mutually exclusive. You could do additional payments, have a policy surrounding that, and combine that with a general fund reserve policy as well, that makes a lot of sense. I kind of see the pension trust as being a little bit exclusive. I don't know that you would do additional payments and a pension trust. One, because I'm not sure you have money to do both. Two, once you, the idea of the pension trust is to start accumulate money to help pay down those future deficits or future implications. So if you're making the one-time payments, conceivably, you're already doing that and you probably don't need two different mechanisms. The pension trust, you would go through, I would recommend, if that's what we do, we'd have to do an RFP. There's at least three firms that I'm aware of that provide that service. We'd probably set up some kind of oversight board to help guide the investments. You're out in the open market with your money, so we'd have to think about the investment strategy for that, have some recommendations on that, and recommendations on when to draw down from that. So I think combining that with an additional payments is a little duplicative.
Yeah, I guess going along with that line of thinking, in terms of the GF Reserve, if we entered into something like that, knowing that we were going to be building a reserve, there would also be a means of doing that and then also appealing to our employee groups perhaps to do something sort of future cost savings and then kind of have the city doing its part and the employees doing one part, so you could sort of put those together in that sort of way?
That's correct. I think employee cost sharing really could be combined with any of them. To your point, though, to combine it with status quo doesn't really indicate much, you know, on the city's end, but any of the other options that would combine would.
Okay, thanks, John.
I think we're just, at this point, we're just having discussion. Question, you know, follow up with your questions with discussion on where Jen has guided us to this point and where we might want to get clarification and then direction, and then we'll kind of have a, we'll see what kind of consensus we can all come to.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Jen, for the info, the exciting info. And it is exciting. So with regard to the tenets that I personally feel comfortable with in thinking about moving forward in addressing this most unfortunate issue for literally all cities across the state, would be cost avoidance, cost sharing, and risk control. And so, and I look at that and I apply my tenets to the options that you've outlined. My issue with pension trust is that, you know, that's well and good for cities that have significant amounts of financial cash reserves available that they can allocate to a trust. I just don't see that here, and the fact that it's irrevocable is a real issue for us because of our future cash status and cash flow opportunities or lack thereof. And that would concern me greatly. I don't see where the dollars would come from to do it. And number two, when the rainy day hits, it's not going to take much rain for us to get flooded. And so if I can't tap the piggyback or we can't tap the piggy bank during that time, we're in trouble. So I would exclude that personally as an option. The general fund reserve, to me, is just another line item expense that just says, you know, you're going to have this fund set aside, but once again, the way I think about it is, it says that we'll allocate dollars, but when an emergency comes and the rains start, chances are, we might have to pull dollars from that. And we have no dollars available right now to begin to fund it because the piggy bank, in essence, is, I'm not going to say empty, is nearly empty. And so from an option standpoint, to me, I don't really see that as a viable option. Status quo is not a viable option, that's already been said. Additional payments, however, I think you've started that trend. And as cash flows are available, if we can avoid the interest expenses associated with remaining debt, we should retire debt as soon as possible. And so I would advocate for, through some kind of policy, that whenever we have the opportunity, as you determine through the actuarial evaluations that you get, and I know you've shared with me the various funds that we have out there, I would advocate for, from a policy standpoint, looking at throwing additional cash, at retiring any of the greatest interest payments as soon as possible. And really, mindfully, as a council, think about that and make that a priority in allocating cash in the future because of the huge magnitude of this debt. The issue of employee cost sharing is a tough one, especially in a city like ours, because of, you know, wage and salary issues in general are tight. However, I don't see how we get anywhere without addressing that. And I would support the notion of looking at the feasibility and possibility, and I know there are constraints within the system of how much and how fast that can occur, but I certainly would support taking a look at that because I don't think that we can begin to chip away at this huge issue without considering that. One thing that's not on the list is advocating at the state level for relief, and I know that's a fluffy thing that we're going to do anyway, but I think it's important for this council to really think about supporting through the league some kind of legislative relief for cities and jumping on that bandwagon. And I know that the league is looking fervently and feverishly at those opportunities, and we should seek to support those as we feel the need to and we consider them to be viable opportunities. But I think we've got to get that message from cities like ours to a higher level and support that with our congressional leaders, at the state level and the federal level as well. One thing that this really speaks to, in my mind, is the broader issue of, you know, when you just look at what we are as a city and what the fundamental problem is, the fundamental problem is scale. We're a small city, and we have, because of the past, no past issues with this council, just the past, the way it occurred, we do not have large areas where I believe we can reduce expenses to reallocate dollars to something like the relief of these kinds of funds that you've talked about. And so revenue enhancement through economic development and new revenues to the city and pushing that initiative forward, I believe, is the way or part of the way out of here, one of the big ways out of here. And we have to, and you speak to it in other areas, and we're about to go into that, I know, new revenues, but unless, as a city, we aggressively go after economic diversity in the community, we're sunk. And I don't say that lightly because we just can't depend upon the past to fund the future. Tourism is great, and I think we can try to maximize that as much as possible, but we have to look for new sources of revenues, and I know we're going to talk about that, to help set up funds to be able to retire the debt that we're talking about here. And the last, I think the last thing that I would say with regard to this issue is that it is no fault of this council or previous councils that we're in this pickle. It's not a local issue in Morro Bay, it's a statewide issue. And, you know, we can point fingers at unions and all kinds of policies that were set at a state level, but that does no good in terms of really getting out. And I think what we have to adopt is a mindset that this is the most serious issue financially facing the city right now, and everything that we do, every decision that we make has to be filtered through the notion that we have this huge unfunded debt that's sitting out there that's going to hit us. And as we look at our 10-year plan, we don't have literally many coins in the piggy bank to do it. And so those are my general comments. Gosh, that sounds terrible, doesn't it?
Thanks, John. Marla?
Let me just ask a couple of questions first, if I may. First, I want to thank you for doing this because I think it's so great that you're being proactive and you're thinking about options now, and you're giving us time to think through and do some more research before we suddenly just find ourselves in the pickle. Are your projections, when you've done your 10-year projections, based on how many employees are in each one of these categories? So do we know that exactly, or is it more of an estimate in general?
I built the salary and benefit projections. I took the 1819 proposed salary and benefit model, which is built off of actual employees, and then built in the increases for PERS, put everybody at top step, built in the increases for PERS, and then the increases associated with, like, health and workers' comp, some assumptions on what those would be.
Right.
We have about, citywide, Dana and Lori pulled the information, it's about a third of our employees in each of those groups. So a third in Pepper, a third in Tier Two, and a third in miscellaneous.
Okay, yeah, I was just wanting to verify that, in fact, the projections were based on those actual employees that we have and how many fall in each category.
Yes.
Let me get to what I think you're asking of me, and that is some direction moving forward. I think of the various options that you've suggested, I really like the idea of the additional payments. I think when we have additional money and if we can come up with a policy or we can have some guidance about what we do with any extra money, naturally, we would just do this, that would be great. I also think that we have to look at employee cost sharing. I noted that, on average, our employees are paying less than the average into their retirement. So I think we're going to have to look at that. I know it is a tough issue, but if it turns out that it's letting people go or everybody helping to solve this problem, that may be what we come to, and we might be there. I think it would be fine to have a general fund reserve for this purpose, as long as we would actually put money into it. But it would force us to address the issue, and it would force us to consider that in each budget cycle, and maybe we don't put money in something else in order to do that. So those are the three that if you asked for some direction in moving forward with coming back to council with some specific recommendations, those are the ones that I would recommend. I also had as a question, do we know what's happening at the state level, since I was also thinking about and knowing that there is some possible action to give us some relief? And I'm sure we're following that, and I don't know if you have any updated information that you give us at this point, but if you do, I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, the news is not great. The governor is a lame duck governor at this point. He made it a goal of his this year legislative session to really push for lasting reform. He does have Pepper under his belt, which will give us great relief in the out years, but he understands that we need relief now, but it's simply not a likelihood with the election coming and folks looking to shore up their base of support. The other alternative is through the courts, and there is a court, a case in the Supreme Court level, the state around Cal Fire and the California rule, which, if the judgment is in favor of the state, which the governor actually wrote a brief himself, which is pretty atypical, that's how important it is for him, that he kind of left that as parting shot to really, for folks to understand we need change. We were hoping that we'd have some indication of where that was going to go in August, September timeframe, but it looks like it may be moving into next calendar year where we'd have a decision that could have lasting ramifications and hopefully in a good structural reform scenario where we could get. We need that relief kind of with existing retirees and also those who are on their way out. Otherwise, the cities are kind of scraping pennies really to try to make this work, and we're all kind of facing a pretty devastating future without structural reform. So the governor is trying his best, I don't assume any changes will occur, and the next governor most likely wouldn't take that up. So I think courts is probably our best option.
Thank you for that. Lastly, I would just say that I certainly agree with my colleagues that what we really need is additional revenue, and I know we're going to talk about it, but I wanted to thank Ms. Truesdale for actually raising the issue of a possible sales tax. That's courageous of her to do, and I thank you for that, so I know we're going to talk about that next.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I just want to, before I get started on my comments, I just want to revisit something I wrote down on my notes to make sure that we, as a council, don't need to go back to. So there was the $40,000 that was previously allocated for the Surf Street stairs that we have now decided that we're not going to utilize through this budget. So that's perhaps something on the table for us to discuss. And there's the, there's capital improvements, are there additional capital improvement programs and projects that we should also have to consider revisiting in this budget cycle?
So the discussion around Surf Street was to appropriate the $40,000 for the planning in 1819, and we're hearing tonight that we're not going to do that, so we'll remove that from the capital budget. The conversation we had at the last council meeting, I had recommended that if you were going to do the planning and consider doing Surf Street, we should set aside the money to fully fund it. And that was going to come from the capital project, capital accumulation fund and project accumulation funds. There was about $450-ish thousand between those two funds, and that's what we were going to use, those monies, to do those Surf Street stairs, the $40,000 for next year and then the future cost of doing those. So you could have a conversation tonight to direct staff to allocate that, the $450,000 that are in those two funds, the project and capital, to another project, if you wanted to. In absence of that, we would just not have a capital project in there, and you could have a discussion at any point in the future about bringing forward a capital project. Recollection is a little bit of a brain cramp right now, but I believe CFAC was discussing, you know, possibility of doing additional sidewalk work with that. And you do have a project that you put on the capital list for projects of about $150,000. So if that's something you want to consider, it probably makes sense to maybe talk about that now, if there's any piece of that $450 that you want to allocate to sidewalks, it would make sense to do that as one whole project, but that's at your.
Okay. So I'll just make a note that maybe we can circle back at the conclusion if we want to have that discussion and being mindful of time. So I just want to get through my comments briefly and then just another shout out to Carol Truesdale. I was thinking, we must have had a glass of wine or something this weekend over the discussion of a sales tax measure and some of this thought like that. But at any rate, I would concur with the comments from my colleagues as far as optional additional payments, the general fund reserve and employee cost sharing. The general fund reserve, I would say, we, in effect, have that general fund reserve policy in place now, it's just not defined as you may have it proposed. So I think to your comments, do we roll over? So, I think to your comments, do we roll over? Just in my view, the general fund emergency reserve policy that we have in place was defined to address the PERS bubble. And so, it would seem that at some point we'd have to rescind that if there was consensus from the council to establish just a general fund reserve policy just for the PERS, which would then, that would transfer funds that we had previously allocated to our general fund emergency reserve and then reallocate that into a new general fund reserve for PERS. Hopefully, that makes sense. But that's the way I kind of understood. We have an emergency general fund reserve and then we were going to be setting up a reserve policy just for the PERS. Is that, is that correct?
You know, we could certainly take a stab at developing a policy and then give you something to maybe have more conversation about. I think, as you were talking, you know, thinking through it, perhaps you want to have a general fund pension reserve and a general fund emergency reserve for economic uncertainties. Being if there was a recession or an economic downturn.
Yes.
You would maybe want those two separate ones. The general fund emergency reserve policy that you currently have would probably need to be rescinded and revised to maybe read more towards an economic uncertainty or budget stabilization policy. And then you'd have an emergency reserve just for pensions.
That's, that makes sense. Okay. Thank you. And then, the revenues. We're going to go into the revenues, so I don't, we don't need to talk anymore about them. We're going to get into the revenues conversation right now?
Yeah. The city manager is going to briefly talk about some revenues and expenditure, things that we've, we've planned.
Jen, I just wanted to, if I could, Mr. Mayor, just add and comment, just to piggyback on what you said. I am not opposed to a general fund reserve for pensions. The point I was trying to make is right now, there's really no, no extra cash to allocate there, but it does raise the visibility and the need is continually in front of us for the future. So, I'm not opposed to that whatsoever. And if by policy, there's an opportunity to relook at that, I would just echo, I would support that as well. So, thanks.
Yep.
So, just to, just to kind of reiterate here and make sure that we're on the same, same page. I think I'm hearing that there's consensus to look at additional payments and a policy for this about when there's funds available and developing something that would kind of guide those for the council to look at. There's a directive on employee cost sharing and working that into negotiations, when they're, when we are in negotiations and when that makes sense and are able to do that. And then also, perhaps a general fund reserve and a policy for that, maybe a modification to the current GFR policy and defining those as strictly from pension and other budget stabilization or economic uncertainty.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Well, you know, there's several ways to address kind of the CalPERS issue, and there's both sides of the ledger. And of course, there's the discussion you just had about, you know, how to, how to fund some of these things in advance when we have the attendant revenues to support such a maneuver. So, we just want to talk briefly about some of the revenue enhancement opportunities that are available to us that have been either discussed by employee groups or advisory bodies such as the Harbor Advisory Body, PWA, et cetera, and that things that we've heard from community members as well as from discussions around city council goals and objectives. So, these are just a few that have been really looked at at a surface level that we would expect to bring back to city council and the community within the next year. There's a potential for low-cost accommodation, RV camping at The Rock. Of course, there's a lot of issues with that that would have to be considered. We do have a parking kind of management discussion that is forthcoming to city council. And any discussion about parking management, of course, you have to do, consider paid parking as part of that to, in essence, pay for itself, but also could help generate some revenue for our business-serving areas. Cannabis tax will be discussed later this month. It could be an opportunity for revenue generation beyond what we currently have, a new source. We'll probably do a fee study this year across the various fees of the city. Of course, that's not intended necessarily to increase revenue, it's really to recapture the costs of doing business and having established policy that, you know, sets different rates of subsidization, but that could bring in enhanced revenue. We have opportunities to sell existing city property. Of course, those are one-time revenues, that's not something you can bank on year after year. And there's other, there's a myriad of other options we can look at. A discussion, you know, a brief discussion about sales tax. Those are, those are kind of things that do have lasting ramifications. And so, we want to kind of look at what, what the comfortability is for city council and the community. On the other side of the ledger is expenditures. So, something that we started doing this year is looking kind of at management structure and overall organizational structure of the city, making sure that we're efficient as possible. Trying to find where we can reduce expenditures that aren't necessarily staff-related, using technology and other things like that. There's cost sharing that was discussed as part of the UAL options and looking at ways, different ways of providing services moving into the future that maybe doesn't require the same number of headcount as, as people retire or move on. Regardless of whether it's a revenue or an expenditure, we were really committed this year moving forward into enhancing our outreach to the community as well as with our employee groups. So, just as a high level, we see a great opportunity to combine the city goals and objectives process with kind of budget workshops because they really are married together. City council had a goals and objectives workshop this year, was really focused on 2018. But next time around, it's, we'll have new, likely have new members, potentially have new members of council, and it's an opportunity to really kind of make, check in with the goals that we have established already, make sure those are representative currently of our community needs and desires, and establish objectives that connect back to those goals. The budget really needs to be forged within that. So, that gives us a great opportunity to leverage that, to reach out to the community and understand what, what those goals are. We plan to seek input from a variety of methods. Not everybody comes to city council meetings, although they are fun and exciting. Not everybody has that, that ability to make it. So, having workshops where people are at, using online surveys or other methods to engage people in the comfort of their own homes, and using social media and other platforms to really get the message out and receive meaningful input. And engage the advisory bodies who have been concerned about revenues and just being able to balance our ledgers. So, we'll work with them as well. And then we'll continue the work that's, the good work that's already been done with the Employee Budget Advisory Committee, who've brought forward some good suggestions for this year and moving forward because they understand that they're part of the solution as well. So, those were kind of the parting things I wanted to share with council, and we're happy to get input or discussion from council.
Okay. Great. Red?
I would like to add the 1% sales tax that Carol brought forward. So, it's, it's a tax that is paid at least equally by tourists as well as by residents. And it's new money. As to the others, I support. The rest of that list for revenue enhancements, I think RV camping at the park would provide exciting new opportunities for visitors. And I know that the RV enhancement at Morro Strand Campground has been wildly successful. Those spaces are rented all the time. Paid parking certainly has to be part of our, our parking management plan, and the cannabis tax will be coming back. So, I'm happy with that list, including a proposed sales tax.
Matt?
Yes, I think the big ticket on there is the sales tax for, general sales tax. I think cannabis is problematic simply because when we've talked about cocaine, medicinal cannabis sales, we have to be wary in terms of what we want to use that money for. So, I would put that further down the chain here. I think the sales tax would be first and foremost, especially if we identify either A, a sunset period, or B, what it can be used for, whether or not we're going to put it into streets and roads, or we're going to put it into some other aspect of the city. The RV camping at The Rock, in terms of, even if we don't make that a continual 365-day-a-year activity, there are a lot of big, big events down on the waterfront. That, that sort of specialized camping, from the surf contest to the Harbor Fest, that that could benefit and be a sales point to bring people in, and we could maximize funds that way also. So, with all that said, I agree with everything on here. I think priority would be to investigate that sales tax. The paid parking, we're going to, in past, in the past three and a half years of me being on council, we have a very wary public in terms of paid parking. And so, anything going down that road, we're just going to have to really bring the public in to talk about it and see where we want to go with that.
All right. Matt, thanks. John?
Thanks, Matt, and Red for that. Appreciate it. I agree with literally everything you said. First, first comment I'll make is that messaging to the community is extremely important. I'd venture to say probably 80% of folks aren't really, don't either see or know what's going on with the city and no fault of ours, but in some way, we've got to get to them. And I like your approach of going to them and getting the message out. But not only the general message about other programs, but the financial status of the city, I think it has to be out there so that we really gain the involvement of the community as a whole to be part of this. Secondarily, I absolutely support a general sales tax initiative. I think we have to do it. Thank you, Mrs. Truesdale. I mean, I absolutely think that it has to be done sooner than later, that we should consider it and explore what that would mean from a financial standpoint. I think we should look at TOT reallocation. And when I start to talk about this, I know the hoteliers get extremely nervous, and I'm not speaking about a TOT essential increase, just add-on to the rate, but I'm talking about a reallocation and some creative looks at bringing in, and we haven't finished the discussion on VRs and verbose and all the other stuff that's out there. But, but we've either got to, through policy, decrease the general fund contribution and/or get a TOT increase that will benefit the city in terms of the general fund. I don't think we're sustainable without it. And I think innovatively, the way to do it is through reallocation, and we began to explore that a little bit at our meeting a couple of weeks ago. I think it should be on the table and we need to look at it. Economic developments to driver for the future. Revenue diversification as soon as possible, quickly. I don't see a lot of low-hanging fruit out there, but there's fruit to be found. And the economic development initiative has got to be moved forward on quickly. And working with the chamber as our partner to do that is extremely important. And getting some, some wins with regard to that through, through attraction and growth of existing businesses is key. And lastly, I think also there are creative ways to look at expense reduction. I'm not saying that we should take that off the table. But when I look at this 10-year forecast, we've not done, in my opinion, any scenario planning, and I'd like to see some scenarios that, that say kind of what if, if we changed a couple of assumptions here? What might it look like? And I could talk offline with Jen about that, but it's very easy to change some of the assumptions. And you can either get more excited or very much less excited about what's going on with the city. I think this is a good general look, and if you agree that the assumptions are appropriate, it's pretty scary. It's, it's not a company I'd invest in. It's a company that I would want to reformulate, reevaluate, and re-functionate, as we call it in the, in the industry. And that means fundamentally doing business a different way. And so, that mindset, I think, has to be culturally adapted by the city as a whole, as well as within the employee group. And I'll stop there and let my colleagues continue.
Marlaus?
Well, I can't follow that. I can say that I would agree with everything you said, John. I agree certainly about the additional sources of revenue that we should be exploring. I agree that we need to engage the community in new and novel ways in this crisis that we're facing. So, I really support everything you said. Thank you.
Okay. Great. I'll just go down the list. I'll speak to the RV at Camping at The Rock. I wouldn't be in favor of that on a full-time basis. I could see doing it event-specific as a pilot program, just to test the water. Paid parking, that's one that, you know, how do you enforce that? So, not sure how that, that works. I know it's an option and, you know, I'm in favor of exploring it, but there's also enforcement that goes along with that. The cannabis tax, of course, I support, and the other recommendations that are listed. I'll talk about the sales tax one because this one, I've been thinking about as well. Matt, you mentioned some things that I'll just continue with. I think we should explore a sales tax measure. I think it should be, based on the limited information I have, I think it should be considered a 10-year sunset because that fits the 10-year window in which we're talking about. I think we should have that discussion next year for special election. These are just my comments on that. I don't know exactly where council would want to go. Considering all the things we're facing right now, I don't know if right now is the right climate to do it. I think a special election is, is worth the expense to do because we're single-focused and it gives a fair chance for an honest discussion to take place instead of something done during a campaign. I'd also say that we should link the sales tax measure with a strong conversation with our T-Bid. We had the conversation, and Red, thank you for, as we were going through the discussion, you know, I had an initial proposal in that we should rescind the $150,000 estimate that was allocation that was in there as part of our commitment. And you wisely said that, you know, we really hadn't had that conversation with them, so why should we just rescind it at this moment? Which I appreciate it, but I think in next year, I think we should have that conversation. We should solidify what we're doing with the vacation rentals and the RV parks. That T-Bid should be a five-year commitment, and those, our tourism, our investors and partners on that should know what they're getting into. And if we could put that all together with our, because the T-Bid can be an annual or a five-year commitment, if we can lay out that strategy as well as cost sharing, I think that's vital, that if we're going to go through a possible tax measure, that, you know, it should be shared with the employees. And I think that packaging of itself could be the buy-in for a 10-year sunset. And that would provide us some stability. I don't think we could wait for the state to come up with a solution. I think, you know, we should be making these decisions ourselves. And I think it would provide some stability and predictability and the opportunity to weather through the PERS, not only the PERS, but we could have, you know, additional fundings to enhance the economic development and continue and have money to invest in economic development and over a 10-year period. Those are my comments on the, the sales tax measure. Not sure you have to capture all that, Jen, but just for the sake of conversation, those are, you know, some of my thoughts on the sales tax measure. And then did we, I think, did we need to circle back on the $40,000 that we, that I just brought up in the CIP? How do you, do we need to just have a brief conversation with council on that?
If you want to provide any more direction beyond just- If you want to provide any more direction beyond just doing nothing with it, other than...
You know, I don't know if we could have a full, healthy discussion on all that, not having all the information in front of us, but I think there's opportunities out there that we should be looking at for capital improvement projects that we should be addressing. I don't know if there's an opportunity to bring back a brief list for us to review. It doesn't necessarily mean it would hold up adopting the budget, but perhaps giving us a, a quick bird's eye view of what we might be able to look at, at our next venture, and then we can go from there. Does that make sense for council?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, okay. And Red?
May I circle back to one item on revenue enhancement we did not discuss, which was sale of property and credits. I would just like to say that I do not favor converting capital assets into straight revenue. That I think our capital assets are pretty much, are paid for. So if we can convert them to revenue-producing while still under our ownership, that is the approach I would favor.
Thanks. Thanks for that clarity. I think, not to contradict you or anything, but I just wanted to elaborate a little bit because we did have a discussion several years ago on the list of properties that the city owned, and there was surprisingly more than I, than I thought. And so we, we did have that discussion. There are some that we did put up for sale, and one was sold in a beach tract, I believe. We still have the Coral Avenue property that's in escrow that is dedicated to the fire department, and there might be some properties that may come up, but I'd agree the revenue, if there are revenue enhancement, that would be great, but if there's something that is an opportunity to sell, and granted, it might be one-time funds that goes to pay, you know, pay down, that might be an opportunity as well.
And I would echo that, too. If they're revenue-producing, I concur, do not, but if they're sitting on books and they could be added to pay-down fund for CalPERS, by all means to retire that debt, I think we should consider removing them from the books, taking the cash, and allocating it to reduction of CalPERS liability.
And I would, I wanted to just circle back on your sales tax comment. I also do not support a sales tax for November of this year. I'm also looking at, thinking about next year in terms of special election. I would agree with what the mayor said, so I just wanted to fall back on that.
Just one more, go ahead, Matt.
I would like to put a little bit of clarification in terms of the, if we do do any sort of RV camping at the Rock, that it became an RV special event sort of camping, rather than a general, open up a campground at the Rock, simply because there's big-ticket items, and I think that's more specific, and then we wouldn't necessarily be quote-unquote, you know, damaging or ruining the Rock, but however, we would be able to just make it special.
Event-specific?
Event-specific, yes.
Okay, great. Just one, four more final comment on the sales tax. Sorry, but just as something to, you know, for, you know, the viewing audience who is listening to this and thinking through that, and for council to consider, Slocog went through the process of a sales tax initiative, and I just want to share some information briefly, just to revisit that, and for maybe the listening audience. At that time, that was a, that was a specific, so that was a two, that was a two-thirds sales tax. And what Slocog developed at that time, before the, the sales tax measure was put on the ballot, they developed an ordinance. So they did all the research. It was very defined in how that money was spent by ordinance. And I would say if we were to consider that a sales tax measure, that was really a good model in which we should consider because it evaluated what our needs were, and it defined what it was, and it basically told our community, okay, this is what we're committing to, and you don't have to worry about where it's going because it's, it's defined. Slocog's sales tax measured, as we know, we missed that by some 670-some-odd votes, narrow margin, but I just put that out there. Unless there's any other closing comments?
Just a comment on that, and maybe Joe has a comment, that does put it in the special category and does require two-thirds approval. And I just want to throw that out as a consideration, and I avoided that conversation specifically because of the fact that it puts it in a different category, but thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks. Any other clarity, Jen?
Yes, so in terms of your list of capital projects and possibly what to do with that $40,000 or $400,000, you mentioned bringing that back. I think your June 12th and June 26th meeting are pretty full. Is that something that can come back after budget adoption and there's a more...
I think so, yeah. Yep, okay. All right, anything else, then? Okay, I think with that, we can adjourn this meeting. We'll take a short recess, and then we'll re-adjourn with our regular city council meeting at 6 o'clock. Thank you.